I'd like to call to order the Yuba City Council Regular Meeting of July 18, 2017. Roll call, please.
Mayor Cleveland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Didval.
Here.
Councilmember Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Okay, we will be standing for the invocation by Councilman John Buckland and then the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Sean Harris.
You bow your heads with me as I pray. Almighty Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all those that are gathered here tonight. We're truly blessed by your presence. We ask for guidance and clear vision so the efforts of staff and council will be of benefit to those that live and work in our community. It's in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, for that. Okay, we will move on to presentations and proclamations. I need to get a look up for a signal. Okay. Because of all those activities out on the roads, we have firemen that are still getting cleaned up from those activities so they can be here in just a little while for their presentation. So I will skip number one presentation for now and move on to number two. Would Jeannie Werner, please, come forward?
Here. Great to see you again.
I know, thank you.
And glad you're still so active in this.
Thank you.
The proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, July 2017. This is represented from Casa de Esperanza, Jeannie, and the president presenting to them for their, for this community. Casa de Esperanza has led the way in addressing sexual assault by providing 24-hour hotline services to victims, survivors, and their significant others responding to emergency calls, offering support and com- support and com- okay, supporting comfort to those impacted by sexual assault. Staff and volunteers of sexual assault programs work year-round to encourage every person to end sexual violence and to support survivors by providing prevention education and survivor empowerment information. Casa de Esperanza has set an important example of how forging collaborative relationships between service agencies and organizations serves to improve the quality of service for those most profoundly and directly impacted by sexual violence. Casa de Esperanza requests public support and assistance as it continues its efforts to bring real hope for freeing victims from the tragedy of sexual violence to create a future where all women, men, and children can live free from violence and exploitation. Now therefore, be it resolved that in recognition of the important work done by sexual assault programs in cooperation with Casa de Esperanza, the U.C. of Yuba City Council hereby proclaims in the month of July 2017 that no means no. Women and men working together can make a difference in the fight against sexual assault and gender violence in our community, proclaimed this 18th day of July 2017. So, congratulations. Thank you for your assistance in that. And I'd hope that if you don't know what Casa de Esperanza is, that you do, you know, ask her what it's about and how they've done this. And it's, how many years now?
Forty years.
Forty years this year that we've had Casa. And I think it was one of the first one in the state of California.
Seven, let's see.
I think it's the first in Northern California.
Northern, yes.
Yes, in Northern California. So, we do lead the way in many other areas in this, in the state of California. Thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you much.
Would you like to say anything?
Does anyone have any questions, honey? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna look at this, on this side. Okay. Let's see here. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor.
Joe.
How are you?
Good.
Good. So, Mr. Federico, I believe, is running late due to our traffic issue, but I know that he is en route.
Okay. So, that's a delay on that one, too. It's crazy out there today, so. So can we move you to somewhere down where, are they here yet? Pete? Okay. Voter outreach. We'll just move on with that, which means I get to go sit down. And we'd like to call Donna Johnston, our Sutter County Clerk Recorder and Register of Voters, to give us a new presentation on some change in voting.
Okay, all right, thanks. Good evening. Thank you very much for having me this evening. I wanted to talk to you about a special program that Sutter County has been chosen to participate in, and that is called Senate Bill 450, or the Voters' Choice Act. So in 2016, this bill was adopted, which allows counties, it's optional for us, to go into this, this type of election process, which would change the way that we do elections currently. If we followed this model, we would have vote centers open instead of traditional polling places. So the polling places wouldn't be open. We would have vote centers throughout the county, but they would be open 10 days before the election and then on Election Day as well. In addition to that, we would have drop boxes for vote-by-mail ballots to be dropped off at. And new security regulations are being created by the Secretary of State to accommodate this new vote model if we choose to do so. There's 14 counties that have been chosen. Like I said, Sutter County is one of those. The ones you see here in red are the ones that have chosen not to do it. The ones in green have chosen definitely to go forward with it. And I'm here tonight to ask for community input to find out if our community would like to vote, to choose this vote model. So here's our ballots that are issued by percentage. As you can see, that we have a lot of vote-by-mail ballots, but in June of 14, we were a little over 55 percent, and it jumped all the way up in November 16 to over 76 percent. We're 76 percent vote-by-mail right now. So you can see that trend just from people opting to choose to vote by mail has increased over the years. The turnout is rather startling when we took a look at these numbers. The turnout by voting method, the blue indicates through vote-by-mail, and the orange are the people that go to the polls on Election Day. So what happened in June of 2014, we had about a 28 percent return at the polls. That is a gubernatorial election, similar to the one that's coming up next. And then the orange indicates the, you had a dismal 8 percent turnout in Sutter County, but it was low throughout the entire state. In November 2016, we had a 56 percent turnout from people who voted, who vote by mail, and we had a 20 percent turnout for people who go to the polls on Election Day. But bear in mind that Sutter County always is a few percentage points more than the statewide average, so we do pretty good. So under the current model, like I said, polling places would go away, but polling places are only open on Election Day. If we choose to go with this new vote center model, they would be open anywhere from three to 10 days before the election. And then, right now, a voter needs to go to their assigned polling location to get their particular ballot that they can vote on. Under the vote center model, if we choose to go that direction, a voter could go to any vote center in the county and get their particular ballot. So for instance, to explain that a little bit further, say you live in Meridian, but you're, you work in Yuba City. If you came in to vote in Yuba City, then you wouldn't get your ballot type that you would get if you lived in Meridian. Under this new vote center model, you'd get that ballot type. So again, the current model, we've got 76 percent of people that vote by mail and 23 percent that are poll voters. Under the new legislation, however, every single person would be turned into a vote-by-mail voter. So everyone would get a vote-by-mail ballot 29 days prior to the election. And how you could return those vote-by-mail ballots currently, you can either do it by the mail, you can come into our office, which is pretty close to where we are right now, or you can go to any polling location, but you can only do it on Election Day. Under the vote center model, in addition to those options, you could drop it off at a vote center and then at any of these ballot drop-off locations with these new boxes. Should we decide to go with this model, we would buy those and put those out throughout the county. So this is what we're looking at if we decide to go forward with this. We would have two vote centers, according to the State, Secretary of State's voting model, which would be one, which would be our office, and the other would be in Live Oak, which is the next major city that we have. They would have three additional vote centers throughout the county, probably one down East Nicholas area, another one in Yuba City, and possibly one out in Sutter, to accommodate for three days up to Election Day, including Election Day. And then four ballot drop-off boxes throughout the, throughout the county, probably in the libraries, places of high traffic. We're looking at those possible locations right now. In this, there's another change. We have conditional voter registration or same-day voter registration. That was enacted a few, just shortly ago. We had 200 people that we had to turn away last time because, for the November 16 election, because they registered after the 15-day close. So we weren't allowed to, to put them in to allow them to vote at the November 16 election. However, they are eligible voters for any future elections. Under the new vote center model, we'll be able to accommodate this out at the, out at the vote centers. If we decide to stay with a traditional polling place model, unfortunately, the voter would be restricted by election code to come into our office only to get a vote, to get a ballot, to be a same-day registered voter. What happens with that is if they came into, to vote on same day, they're not registered. We would register them. They would get something similar to a provisional ballot. It's called a conditional voter ballot, until we can determine whether or not they're eligible by the Secretary of State's office, if they'll let us turn them into an eligible voter. And if so, we'll go ahead and cast that ballot for them. But like I said, the difference between a vote center model and the other model means that we would have to have all the voters come into our location, into our office, whereas if we were with a vote center model, they could come to any vote center and have this And again, that just recaps what I just said, a little more flexibility for everyone. Some of the additional outreach pieces that we would need to do, should we decide to do this as a community, would be make sure everybody knew about it. So we would have, we have certain guidelines we have to follow, making sure that we go through and make sure that we get everyone's contact. We have to contact each voter twice, a personal contact, meaning a postcard, in addition to these other types of services you can see up here, to make sure we get the word out. The other thing that we're looking at if we go with this vote model is a mobile vote center. So we may do pop-ups if we decide to go forward with this, and that would be a temporary vote center for the day, maybe at a senior citizen center or a care facility, the college or something like that. We may decide to do some pop-up vote-by-mail return centers and do a little more outreach that way as well. So this is where, this is something I'd like you to jot down. We want your two cents. We want your opinion. We would like to know whether or not you think this would be a good idea for our community going forward. This is a decision that we're, our office makes. It's not one that's governed by the Board of Supervisors. It's one that, that our office will make. And so we want to get your feedback. We want to have your, your thoughts, whether or not you think this is a good idea or not a good idea. So that's the email address that we've set up for this purpose. It won't cost us anything more to do this in the long run. Initially, it'll cost us a tiny bit more to do some voter outreach, the types of things that you saw there. We're going to, if we go forward with this, we will minimize that effort as much as possible. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions from, or comments from the council members?
I do. Donna, for the outreach, would you also put into consideration the bilingual, you know, Hispanic as well as Punjabi due to our demographics, to ensure that our outreach is reaching those folks as well?
Most definitely.
Any else?
Yeah.
Good morning, Mayor.
Yes.
So with this starting tent, would you be able to count each night or you still have to wait for the big day?
Well, we can start processing ballots now before Election Day. The ones that you see, the very first set of results you see on Election Night, are the ones that are pre-staged, which means they run through our first set of scanners. We cannot move them to our tally equipment until the polls close at eight. So the same process would still occur, but with a slight difference. If we go with the vote center model, the very first set of results on Election Night would be it. That's it for the evening, because we will be, that, we won't have any ballots coming in from the polling places that are live ballots that you put directly into the ballot box, because everyone will be a vote-by-mail voter, so it would be a slightly different change.
More questions? Seeing none. Well, thank you for the presentation, the idea, and everybody center your questions and ideas. My only real one is the identification, how you're gonna, somebody like, example you use, from Meridian, they come into Yuba City, and their identification, proof that there it's where they live, or how would that, that would have to be some pretty good computer setups or something set up for that identification.
Yeah, we will, we will have our, our election management system, we'll have a computer there at each vote center so we can look you up directly.
Right, okay. That's what I figured, but I wanted to hear that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, let's see if I can get on track a little bit here. Sometimes things kinda get shifted around. Okay, I'm gonna go for Joe first.
So Mayor, first of all, thank you for letting us take your time to bring Mr. Joe Federico up to the front. As most of you know, Mr. Federico is a local businessman. He's Vice President of the Downtown Business Association. He even coached youth basketball for the Recreation Department. I'm not sure how they, how well he did that year, but probably even his passion, and perhaps he'll break out in song for us, but I understand he can sing a little country western. Anyways, this is Mr. Joe Federico.
Thank you for taking care of me. She knows I forget things. Joe, good to see you here in a different venue instead of Palomos, but you deserve this.
Thank you very much.
And I'll give you a little more information on it to the public.
They're probably dinner, that's why I hate them.
I know that wasn't true. You have, you have the dinner. As Mayor of the City of Yuba City, I would like to personally thank you on behalf of our city for your generous donation, which allowed 600 adults and children free admission to our Gauche Aquatic Park to escape the 105-plus degree on Friday, June 30. You then went above and beyond in by staying with three of your own staff members to hand out water bottles and ice cream that you also provided. Joe, you truly are a dedicated member of our community with a desire to help disadvantaged citizens have an opportunity to enjoy beautiful amenities of our Gauche Aquatic Park. The City of Yuba City and the Community Services Department look forward to partnering with you on the future community outreach programs and activities. Again, thank you. As, as was already said, you've already been involved in other activities in the community. You're always doing something, thinking of new ideas, you know, the, just the creativity of your thoughts and stuff, as I've, as I have learned. But thank you very much for doing this. Perhaps we could split it between two days this next time so that it, it doesn't get impacted with so many people, because it only handles so many. And so this next time, anybody in the community that also desires to do something similar, we'll try to set it up for certain days that the people could go in there and, and utilize those. But thank you.
Let's make it an annual thing, that'd be great.
That'd be fun. Yeah, have three or four days there. People would do that. Appreciate it. Thank you. Hangin' on my finger.
Time to do your part of this and introduce and explain what's the hall going on.
Mayor Cleveland, members of the City Council, thanks for having me here tonight. My name is Pete Daley. I'm the Fire Chief for Yuba City. So it's been a challenge for us today. That's why we're running a little late. I apologize. We've been running around doing calls, and so for public safety day, it's been very busy for us. But we got them cleaned up and got them here in time, somewhat in time. I know a couple of them actually haven't had lunch or dinner yet, so I know they're kinda looking at me like, hurry up so we can eat, so. So I'll try and move this along as quickly as possible. I heard pizza mentioned somewhere, but I'm not exactly sure where, so. But it's a real pleasure to be here tonight to give a little background on why these gentlemen are here. On February 12, 2017, Sutter County Sheriff Office, California Highway Patrol, and Yuba City Fire Department responded to Terrebonne Road off of Eager Road for a single car in the ditch. There were five people. One of those people in the vehicle was able to self-extricate, get themselves out of the vehicle, call for assistance. But the first units that arrived on scene were two officers from California Highway Patrol, if I could have them come up front, as well as our Engine 7 crew that was on duty that night, if I could have them come up front, please. So this, this crew right here, along with Sutter County Sheriff's Officers, I believe there was two of them that were not able to make it tonight. The vehicle was upside down in the ditch with four people trapped inside. And single-handedly, these gentlemen, along with two other gentlemen, actually went down into the ditch in the middle of the night, not knowing how deep the canal was, not knowing what they were, what kind of current they were running into. If you remember back in February, we had a lot of high water, a lot of rain, the canals were running high. Basically, gave up their own safety and, and for their own personal safety and care to get into the ditch, and they lifted the vehicle onto its side by themselves, by hand. Once they did that, they were able to break a window open and get two of the victims out. They then turned the vehicle completely upside right with their hands. No mechanical equipment, no nothing, just by the sheer strength of the men, and then get the other two remaining victims out of the vehicle. At that time, the other crew members showed up. So I can have Engine 1, Engine 2's crew come up, please, that was on that night. We are missing two people. We have one on vacation and one that recently retired. But here are two other members of Engine 1's crew, who also, when they arrived on scene, along with Battalion Chief, Chief Stoddard. When they arrived on scene, the canal was so deep, they had to actually use ladders to put on this, inside the canal, just to get the patients up. And to get four patients up out of a canal in the middle of the night with water running through it is, is a challenge to say the least. So what these gentlemen did and the, and the cooperation, the teamwork between the CHP and the Sutter County Sheriff's Office and the Yuba City Fire Department was just absolutely outstanding. Unfortunately, I believe, two of the patients did pass away, but two were saved. And so thanks to the heroic efforts of these young men, they did an outstanding job. And I'm very proud to be here today to stand up here and recognize their efforts. And at this point here, that's my background information, so I'll turn it over to the Mayor.
Well, in recognition, we'd like to give each one a hero's certificate for the, the effort they did, which was way above and beyond what you normally would have to do. So you are heroes. I know many of you have already expressed, it's part of our duty, it's what we train for, but I'm sorry, you're heroes when you, when you actually do these things in my eyes. I have a son that's also in, in the Sheriff's Department, so I know what goes into the training and I know what, you know, what is above and beyond. But here I have some church certificates for you. I'll hand to you. I have Sean Harris would like to do a quick presentation to his two Highway Patrol officers, so come on up.
Put on my other hat here for a second, you guys, if you don't mind. You guys come up front here. Zach and John, you know, they, I talked to them immediately after the event and down in the hallway, and exactly like the Mayor said, they kinda shrugged their shoulders. They talked about what they did, so matter of fact, as if they were done something basic, some normal, everyday thing. And it is everyday in the sense that they go to work every day, all, all these gentlemen do, willing to do that. They had an opportunity to prove that they're fully capable and willing to do that rest of their lives for the benefit of those folks that were essentially going to be drowning any minute now. And so I went ahead, did the right thing. I submitted their names, drafted everything up. We have many levels of awards in the California Highway Patrol. We have a departmental-wide award for our employees, which we have here today, signed by our Commissioner, who recently gonna be retired here pretty quick, Joe Pharo. And in recognition of their efforts as members of the California Highway Patrol and appreciation for them on behalf of all 15,000-plus members of our organization and every resident state of California, so I want to thank you for that. I'm not gonna read it, because it says exactly what Chief just said. We only have, we're limited spots here and room on these certificates, but I thought it'd be appropriate here, as long as we're recognizing everybody, to get them up here, because in our training days, when I normally issue these things, we only have about 15 people. This way, you get to embarrass them a little bit there. So it's always good stuff. So, gentlemen, I don't know, I hope you grabbed the right one. I only have one hand free. Make sure you grab the right one. And I thank you very much and very proud of both of you. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Next, we have representatives from Assemblyman Gallagher's office and Senator Nielsen's office. They have some presentations that they would also like to give you, and I will hand this over.
On behalf of Senator Nielsen and Assemblyman Gallagher, they're going to make sure the right plaques get to the right person. It seems uniquely appropriate today that we put together these resolutions to recognize something you did, that you see as being in the line of duty, that we see as the work of a hero, that we are so thankful to know that if something like this happened to us or our loved one, this is the response we can expect from Sutter County, Yuba City, and our first responders. We really appreciate that. But today you showed us, all of us got to see what you could do very quickly to get us all over this city, not really knowing what had happened. It was, it was a challenge, but you got me back to my office, and I thank you for that. So with that being said, you, in your day-to-day lives, are very important to us, and when you step up and do these amazing things for our community and save lives, we just can't thank you enough. And so again, from Assemblyman Gallagher and Senator Nielsen, he commends you and they thank you.
I think we're just chilling.
She's Stoddard. Zach, can you do them, too? Tim, no, I ran through them. Clay Williams, right next to Joe. Jazz Watt Sing, right next to Holly, right there. Derek Sweet, next one on the line.
I think we all should definitely give them recognition. Something going on. Oh, with these two guys? Okay. He's getting extra photos with his, too.
Hold on, we're guys.
Whoop, hold on, he's saying, stop. Pete's saying stop to his guys. Quick photo, also. Thank you very much, Pete.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
We'll give a couple of minutes or seconds here to clear out a little bit. What a great community we have, and public safety members that take excellent care of us in difficult times. Okay, now we'll move on to public hearings, number five, consideration of an inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water sewer services on secured tax rolls, presented by Robin Bertagni.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Finance staff reviews procedures and processes in comparison to those of other agencies, and make changes when something new comes along that we think better supports our goals. We have found that other jurisdictions that place liens on properties for utility services, so we took a look at doing that here in Yuba City, and are bringing this forward for your consideration. This is the first time that I'm bringing such a process forward for our city. Staff feels that it's advantageous, because there isn't the administrative burden of suing in small claims court, going to court, waiting all morning for our case to get called, then ultimately receiving a judgment that doesn't actually result in any money, unfortunately coming into the city's coffers, which is typical. We go to court, we get judgments, and then we put them into the tax intercept program, and oftentimes, we still don't get money coming back on those delinquent accounts. The other thing that we've done is turn them over to a collections agency, and typically when we do that, they collect about 10%, and we pay them 40%. So in the case of the list that we looked at, we had about $50,000 in city receivables. Ultimately, we would collect probably about $5,000. Of that, we would pay them their 40%, and net to the city would be about $3,000, with the remaining $45,000 still remaining outstanding and uncollectible. The last time we updated the city's utility code, we put it in place to where we made property owners responsible for tenants within properties, so that if we had a tenant move out on us, we could require the property owner to put it in their name, trying to scale down on tenants running out on us and owing us money. That said, city staff is feeling that by leaning the properties, we would lean $50,000 and ultimately result in $50,000 in collections through the property tax assessment rules. The cost of doing so is 30 cents per parcel, with a one-time setup fee of $150. So for the first year, it would cost us about $200 to do this, future years would likely be under $50. The list that was sent to you previously with the agenda packet, I'm pleased to say that we've had 45 accounts paid in full, totaling $11,203, after sending out the notices and working with those customers and receiving payments. So an updated list was provided to you tonight, with a total of 128 accounts, $42,000, and just under $168. This ultimately represents about 1% of our utility accounts, because we have around 20,000 utility counts in the city. So of 128 customers, that's very minimal. We do, most of our customers pay us every month and on time. These are the handful of accounts that we've had difficulty collecting. In addition to those, we have seven that we've withdrawn from the list, because they contacted us after receiving our letter, and we've put them on a payment plan. And then we have four where the owner has changed, and that person no longer owns the property, so we've gone forth with the intercept program to try to intercept on tax refunds when available to us. That said, we also had about $7,000 worth of accounts that are included in the receivables listing, that are sewer-only accounts, where people, property owners just haven't paid us. We have no mechanism to force collection, we can't shut off their water service, because they're sewer-only accounts, they don't have city water services. So they've come to understand that we're not going to go out and dig up the roadway and cut and cap their service. So this, by putting it on the property tax rolls, it assures bringing them current at least once a year, and even if we only get payment once a year, at least it would be caught up once a year. So city staff discussed this proposal and wanted to bring it forward for your council's consideration. I know we've got quite a few folks here tonight that would like to speak about it. I'm here and available to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments from the council for Robin at this time?
Robin, I'm sorry, through the mayor.
Go ahead.
I know you probably said, but refresh my memory, how many accounts are typically delinquent, what percentage?
This list comprises less than 1% of our accounts. We normally do shut offs on two days per month, and on average, I would say, we have less than 300 accounts that we shut off every month. It varies, it's somewhat seasonal.
One to 2%?
Yeah, it's, we have a very good collection rate, because we, we force payment by shutting off people's water in most cases.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, can open the public. And I do have a few cards here, as I said, and I will start off with Sukdev Sahota, please. The next person in line will be Sohal. So please get up behind and just wait and be ready.
Hi, my name is Sukdev Sahota. My only question is, like the staff said, you cannot turn the sewer line off, but I got billed for 10 months. How come they didn't turn the water off two or three months after they didn't pay the bill? Now, three years later, they billed me for 10 months, which they should have turned the water off, so tenant could have left or paid the bill. So that's the only concern I have, why, why 10 months? I know recology, they, they do the same, but they don't wait for 10 months. So it's $730 some dollars I got billed for. City should have done some better, something better, just not to let it linger for forever. Now, they waited for three years to build me, which my tenant didn't pay three years ago.
Only thing I could recommend is bring that to the department, Robin can direct you. Goes through the, doesn't come to me. It goes to the clerk. It goes to the clerk. Clerk always gets it and checks it out.
So, yeah.
I would be happy to talk with you and, and find out specifically what the situation was related to your account.
Because typically, yes, in, in the scenario he described, we most definitely do go out and shut off the water. I'm not aware of the specific address, and if there was a tenant living there that was potentially a problem, and maybe the tenant kept turning the water back on, and ultimately we locked it off, or what the situation is, but I would be happy to, to meet with anyone and/or talk with them by phone if they work out of town, what have you, to try to resolve this. The lien process is kind of our last-ditch effort to try to collect on these accounts, so that we're not having to spread those uncollectible receivables to other rate pairs. But I'm happy to meet with anyone or talk to anyone about their account.
So Mr. Sahota, I recommend that you go ahead and get ahold of her and get this worked out, and there will be a good resolution for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sohal, I think it's Bolwant. And then Brian, get up right afterward, please. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Balwant Sohal. I have same problem with my rentals. Couple month I pay already, but then he said he going to take care, but he did not pay. I call in to disconnect, and they didn't, and then they send me that bill back. Please.
Get ahold of Robin. Robin, take his name, I guess, and set up an appointment and find out.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And then, I think it looks like Karen.
My name's Brian D. Tepfer. I got a notice, late, it's about six, eight months behind. I calculated it out, they didn't pay for seven months. And then all of a sudden, I get, I evicted them, and now I got a bill for 350 something bucks. And I, I don't understand what's going on. Why didn't they turn off the water? Why didn't they tell me that they were delinquent? And I would have turned off the water, I would have turned it off and locked it out. But they didn't tell me anything. Now they want me to pay $351? Why? It wasn't in my name. I didn't use the water. My client, my tenant used it. They should be paying. I mean, thank you.
Basically, same answer. Go with them and try, and, and thank you, I appreciate you coming. Mr. Mayor, if you just give Robin Bertagni, the Finance Director, your circumstance will probably be shared by others, so I'd like to afford Robin an opportunity to respond to a circumstance where water, he received a bill as the owner for $350, because the tenant hadn't been paying for several months, and his question is why, pardon me?
Seven months.
Seven months. So why had it not been shut off earlier? And I just want to be able to adequately, if you can, address that, in case others have the same circumstance. Thank you.
Typically, my staff, we send out a bill on the first of the month. That bill doesn't get paid, for example. A bill gets sent out the following month that shows the past due balance. If that doesn't get paid, we sent out a red notice that tells them that if they don't pay, we will shut them off. So there's about a 45, 45-day delay, 50 days at the most, and we do shut offs typically two days per month. So it would be very unusual for an account to go beyond three months without being shut off. We do have dollar limits, for example, if for some reason an account had a balance due of less than $40, we don't go shut somebody off, because the fee to shut them off and turn them back on costs more than the balance that they owed us. So we try to be reasonable about it. But we did change the municipal code to make owners responsible, to avoid the situation of tenants running out and leaving us with balances. We saw consistency with properties, where the same property would have several delinquent balances, balances that we were unable to collect, and we couldn't find the tenants. So ultimately, we said that owners, if we've had a delinquency, the owner must be responsible for services. We will also provide a dual notification service, where we will bill the tenant, and also give a copy to the owner, send them both bills. Because ultimately, it's between the landlord and the tenant, if the landlord wants to make the tenant responsible for payment. We try to work with landlords as best we can, and use all the resources available in our toolbox to ensure that the accounts get taken care of. But it would be an exception to let an account go for seven months and not have a, a turn-off situation.
Okay.
Question?
Yes.
What happened?
I don't know, I would have to be, sit down with you and take a look at your chemistry.
Get a meeting with her and work it out.
I'd be happy to.
Robin, you say that process is in place now?
The process of dual notifications? Yes, it is.
It is. All right.
Yeah, it's not automatic.
Not automatic.
It's not, no, we have, because we, we don't go back in history and look to see who an owner is on a, on a residence, like with, for example, the assessor's office, to see who holds title to the property. We just know who we have in there that's come in and said they're signing on for service.
Okay. So if they want dual notification, they need to come in and let you know?
Yes, and request it.
All right.
And then we're glad to do it.
Important, all right, thank you.
The mayor?
Yes, please.
When the tenant sign up showing that it's a, they're.
Press it again.
When the tenant sign up showing it's a tenant, isn't protocol that they bring the rental agreement in with them?
Yes.
So wouldn't we know the landlord at that time? Shouldn't we take a copy at that time that we have it in our file then, for in the future? Or do we keep the file, or we just look at it?
We keep a copy of the landlord agreement. I'm looking at Katrina for verification.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I was trying to get my.
Katrina, do we keep a copy of the landlord agreement?
Landlord?
Yeah, when a tenant comes in to sign in for service?
Yeah, the documents we were.
Okay.
We do scan it.
Okay.
For as long as we've been scanning.
Right. But then we wouldn't know if the landlord sold the property and somebody else bought it, unless somebody notifies us, because we don't check title transfers with the county.
But if we would send the bill to the old landlord, I'm sure he would respond very quickly, knowing that he's going to get a $300 bill.
Exactly. I did.
Okay, so, all right, thank you.
Karen?
Thank you.
Then Elaine Miles, after that, please.
Just when, in this case, it is my husband, but when my husband and I have our rentals, each have our own some joint, we customarily say to the tenant, we're responsible for the things we can get leaned on. Here in this city, that I was aware of, that was only recology, and therefore, we pay the garbage bill. It is a consistent bill, build it in, it's not a problem. Over in Marysville, it's recology, and the sewer services are billed separately, and we build that in. This, to me, was a change in procedure, I was unaware that our property could be leaned. I would propose, if it's possible, that the city revise the resolution to do something such as have the, this would have to be notified properly, that the landlord pay sewer in a base water. I would be agreeable, no, no questions asked, agreeable to be saying sewer is $40 and the base water is 15, tack it in, pass it on, everybody's happy. Because I've had tenants abuse water like you won't believe, but I'm agreeable to a base amount. I think all of this, if you want my gut opinion, it all gets back to personal responsibility, and this is where we're tipping the iceberg again of, just because it's easier, just because we don't want to spend time with our city, having to sit in the court, well, guess who had got to sit in the city court system while evicting them? I don't see the difference, honestly, between PG&E, recology, or water and sewer. Why does PG&E lock you out? Recology, pull the cans. Why are we not going out sooner and shutting off the water? And I don't know what happens to sewer, but shutting off the water is certainly an option. I also don't understand how, in today's day and age, with the number of assistance programs we have throughout our city, our state, and even backed by a federal government, these instances, that when a tenant is one month late, and they come in crying, crying, I have a baby, this, that, there's programs. Why does it always fall back to government, or what I now feel like you, sorry, are making landlords as a quasi-government, well, just eat it, just take it off your taxes, just pass it on? I'll tell you this, I've been a landlord for 25 years, and I intended to continue to do this, and I'll tell you exactly why, two reasons. It's a risk-reward thing. I could shove my money in a mutual fund and get a decent return, but by doing this, in the past, I've made some decent side income. I'm telling you, the rewards are not as great anymore, the risks are getting higher. We're having tenants do things that we don't even realize they're doing until they're already evicted and gone. The other reason I got into becoming a landlord was because, honest to God, when I drive through my city, I'll see a house, and I'll think, dang it, that needs this, it needs this help, this help, this help, and it can turn it around. With our minimal amount of sweat equity and talents and tools, and we turn a home around, and make it a better place for us to live in. And I actually view this as community service. But if you want all of us landlords to just keep eating the bill.
You need to wrap up.
We've already invested in New Mexico.
Thank you.
We could pull.
Richard Hobbs, after Elaine.
Elaine Miles, and I say ditto, ditto, ditto. I have a tenant, and I have several, actually, but only one within the city. About everything was answered, but why does it take months for something to show up? We have the situation on a Yuba County house, and they let us know within two months. It sounds like we won't know unless it's at least three or four months. Another issue I have is if you get a copy of the landlord agreement, your leases, for the most part, are good for one year. So are you asking for them to come in with a renewal? Because they continue month to month. Because they continue month to month under the law. And it doesn't sound like we're getting that. The abuse of the water? I pay the water bill and charge the tenant on one of them. Because they reduced their water significantly after I started giving them. It's two months late and I could lose it if they move out. But by giving them the actual cost, they brought it down. They didn't care if they didn't have to pay it. And so if we're putting us all on here where the landlord has to pay it completely, but I give them a bill, it's part of my lease, you're going to add to a lot of, lot more water, which I happen to see in my neighborhood on a new rental, running all over the gutters. Nobody came out. And what happens if this house is under foreclosure and it goes on there? Is the city really going to get that money? Or is it just going to be lost? And what does it cost to file that lien? I've been out of work for a lot of years.
Thirty cents.
Uh-uh. To file a lien on property?
Sorry.
I think that needs to be looked at a little bit closer. There's a lot of government costs of putting a lien on property.
I misspoke. Find out from.
I don't know. But that's something I think that we should really look at. Why don't you send, if somebody turns out late, why don't you send both bills to property owner and the tenant? And let them know immediately.
I would like to address some of Mrs. Miles' comments. Our understanding is that to place a lien and collect through the property tax system for a parcel is thirty cents. If I find out different, I, I will stand corrected, but that's my current understanding.
By setting up the program that you have available, that's all it will take?
Yeah. And as far as sending dual notifications, part of our process is when a tenant is delinquent, we absolutely go shut them off. Speaking with Katrina just a moment ago, because she deals with these customers firsthand, most of the situations where there's several months of usage, it's because we shut the customer off, they turn themselves back on, we see usage on the account, and so we continue billing for it. So it does take a little time before we go lock them off. And when we see that happen repeated times, we send out staff to pull the meter. And we've actually had people, I don't want to advertise this, but hook up their own PVC pipe. So we try to discover any ways we can. Obviously, it's not a free commodity. Water is a very valuable service within the state of California. So we do try to apply the rules fairly and equitably to all of our customer base, which we're required to by Proposition 218. We also do do dual notification to property owners with our final billing process. So we try to always let property owners know when we're aware of who the landlord is. I'm happy to work with landlords and try to assist them with these accounts because these are going back, some of them to 2014, which is when we changed the ordinance within our city municipal code. I think we have another speaker.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? I might have been.
Mr. Mayor?
I might have been wrong on the, yes, that was wrong, eight. Richard, you're going to, not on this issue. I got a.
Mr. Mayor?
But I got to address real quick. Richard?
Yes.
I called you up incorrectly. You're on number eight. So if you could, sorry, I had to sit down. They're all, they were all stacked on top of each other. So I had to pull yours out. Okay, now we will move on to advice or comment from County Council.
You got the wrong, wrong jurisdiction. I'm the city attorney, but that's okay.
I'm the, city attorney.
Mayor, there are two more speaker cards on the subject.
Yes, we know that, but he's going to address me. He's addressing an issue.
I just wanted to clarify the, the issue of the lien and whatnot. If the council were going to adopt this resolution, we're relying on the Health and Safety Code section, which allows this. And it would, would allow the delinquent charges to be collected on the property tax rolls and pursuant to the statute. These charges that are listed in this report that lists the respective properties and the charges, we send that to the county and it would also constitute a lien. So I guess the county can charge a nominal fee of maybe thirty cents. But by virtue of the council, if the council were to adopt this resolution and the, and the city sends it to the county, they would then place it on the tax rolls and it would be collected pursuant to property tax rolls. And in the resolution pursuant to the state statute, we also say that it would constitute a lien. So if the property is going to be sold and, and pursuant to lien, the, the city would collect their money. So that's how the lien process works. Hopefully, that helps.
So money, money eventually does get to us through sometimes a couple of steps in process. Okay.
I'm counting on the collection rate being better than our other collection methods.
Is this Su? Suji Yang? Yeah, please. And then Adam afterward? Yeah, Mark.
So my question is, my tenant been eviction in 2014 November. So just the last month, I got later that he owed the four hundred sixty, sixty-three dollars for water bill. But before he, her eviction, I don't know anything. I didn't got any note. I didn't know anything. So already three years and suddenly I got this later. I don't understand what. What this policy said will be, all the bill will be rolled over to my tax. I don't know what's the reason. How long, how long ago this policy start? I asked the city hall, the city hall said, follow the recology. But the recology always early gave me note, said your tenant or some, some, how much money they didn't pay, we will go and roll, roll over to your test. But my situation is this is three years ago, before I never got any notification. And before I went to city hall, city hall always says tenant's supposed to bill because the name transferred to the tenant's name. So I don't know anything. And finally, before eviction, she already been eviction and nobody can find her. So I don't know, I don't understand why power to me. Before, if I'm, I'm early know the information, I will ask, I, I will be responsible. But I don't know anything before he left.
Understand. So then the recommendation then is to get on the list of the names to set an appointment and they will work on you to straighten this out for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's one of the things is when things like this come up, all of a sudden, everybody comes out. This is, by the way, part of the process of citizen government, representative government to where, you know, a lot of things are not known and there are, are things that we can never look forward to, the, the missings of different things. This is the process. I call it a cake. You throw all the ingredients together and hopefully, when you're done, you end up have a great, a great cake when you're done, when you cook it. And usually, cooking means a little temperature, a little pressure. It's, it's the process of, of our government structure. And so we're very happy to work out the anomalies, the problems that come up when things are changed. Because we knew there was a problem, but we were trying to fix a problem. And this is a part of the process of getting that done. So hopefully, we don't offend anybody. We understand the being upset, but you know, there is a process to getting things corrected. And that's why we, you know, this public meeting is for you. So go on to Adam Markot.
My name's Adam Markot. I'm, I'm here representing my virtual sister-in-law. She's out of town right now, but she wanted me to be present to object on her behalf. The prop, why me even here for her is because there's a lack of notice. Due process is not, is not being met for property owners here. That's one of the biggest issues I think I've heard from everybody who's spoken so far, is that the property owners don't get adequate notice of the, of the, of their guarantee of their tenant's account. I don't understand why. I, I would like to know when exactly the, the Utility Code was amended to make this effective so that property owners became liable for their tenants. And I'd like to know when the notice was given to the property owners that they were now, that they were subject to this, to this change. My parents have been a property, have owned properties for over forty years and they've had a, a water account for over forty years. I recently took over their bills because they're older. I missed a bill. I have a well myself, but missed a bill. And then sixty days later, the water's turned off on my parents who have, who've had the same account, the same house for forty-five years. However, Lorene has a tenant in her rental property. By the way, the tenant died in May of 2016. So this is well over a year old. This is now coming back at her. This tenant, she's the third down from the list. She's the, one of the highest outstanding balances on, on the list, third, the third from the highest. And it's because I know for a fact, her tenant would call or she'd make, go in and make a payment and, oh, I, you know, I need this, I need that, I'm having this problem, this problem, next month, next month, next month. Here's five bucks. You know, and so they let her go on for months and months and months. This bill is almost a thousand dollars. Along with due process, you also have equal protection violations because, you know, they're, the, the, the property owners are not parties to the contract. And now you want to add them in and make them a, you want to make them a guarantee for the water account that they've never even had notice for. You know, there's several, like, several violations, I believe, for different, different rights of the property owners. Equal protection, property rights, privacy rights, because now we're requiring that, that my lease agreement with the tenant be public, scanned in the public documents, the right of association, right of contract, right of judicial access. And most importantly, this really does kind of boil down to double taxation. Property owners pay property taxes to fund the positions so that this kind of stuff doesn't happen. Why is it happening over and over? Why is this going on? What, what we need to look at is, is it appropriate for a taxpayer to pay their taxes properly, fund these positions, and then these positions create, allow these big, huge bills to rack up and then say, oh, oh, that's a problem, so let's just slack it back off to the property owner who pays my salary, you know, and give it right back to them? It, it just doesn't seem appropriate. It seems like double taxation without representation. And that's all I'd like to say on Lorene's behalf. If, if it's really the, it's responsibility of the employees of the city, either it's mismanagement, either because they haven't set proper guidelines for their employees to follow on when a short payment is going to be accepted, or they haven't cut off the account in the beginning when they should have for non-payment. Thank you.
Twelve oh four Clark Avenue, third one down.
We have one more for number five.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Harminder Singh and I have a similar situation with my tenant. He moved out like three years ago in 2014 and somehow I got this notification in my mail and I was not sure what's coming in, you know? So I know where to go now.
Yeah, go right there and get on the list and get this straightened out.
All right, thanks, Ed.
You betcha. Hey, Robin? You have any more comments?
Couple of things. Dual notification, I think, is going to be the key to alleviating at least some of the stress that our landlord owners are feeling right now. At the time that this new ordinance went forward, this was publicized in the Appeal Democrat. I've asked Katrina to verify the date. I want to say it was in September of 2014, but that's off the top of my head. So what we're seeing is these accounts, from that point forward, they are very delinquent because this is the first time that we've brought this forward. And as a policy matter, my plan would be to bring this forward at this time of year, every year in the future, and have a much smaller list of accounts. I want to look at the individual accounts with the balances that are so large, because we put notes in our utility billing database that say, we've read the meter, there's consumption even though the meter's been off. Send staff out to lock it off. We have notes that kind of show the history of the account and why. In some cases, when they're turned back on, we charge a fee for that. Because we're sending out staff repeatedly to deal with the same account because it's a problem account. If a lock is cut, we charge for the cut lock because it's destruction of city property. So there's reasons why these balances accumulate. That's why I want the opportunity to meet with the owners on a one-on-one basis and review the account history and see if there's some reason behind that I can't answer right on the spot as it relates to these accounts. I knew that this would be a contentious matter, frankly, but yet I, as your Finance Director, can't allow bad debt accounts to just run free without addressing them. And I'm happy to say that this process got everyone's attention and got folks talking about it and responding and wanting to talk to us. As I said, we had forty-five accounts paid in full, over eleven thousand dollars collected by the city that otherwise wouldn't have been collected by folks that found out they owed. And I'm happy when me or my staff finds the accounts and collects on them rather than a collection agency that charges us forty percent. Because that way, then all the dollars come here locally and help keep our, our rates at a lower level. So with that, I'll answer any further questions.
Any questions, comments from council members?
Just a question through the mayor. So, Robin, in the event that a lock is cut, that would be a criminal activity. Am I correct? Are the police notified and engaged in, in that criminal activity for an investigation against the property owner? I mean, against the, the resident?
We have notified them on occasion. Typically, now our process, because our officers are very busy with frankly, more important crimes, now we request that Public Works go out and pull the meter.
If there's a bypass put in place, is there a criminal complaint sought for bypassing the utilities?
That is when we get police involved for sure. Absolutely.
Is the property owner notified when that happens?
I'm going to look at Katrina.
Is there a continuing bill that proceeds through the, through the system once the police are involved?
Is, does the bill continue once the police are involved? And I would say yes to that.
Is there still an active account or something, especially?
I mean, I, I find a problem when, once a criminal activity has occurred, that we would continue to look to formally engage the property owner. Property owners are, are in a business. And typically, businesses, when, when there's criminal activity that is precipitated against that business, they may incur costs as a result of that. But certainly, they shouldn't be, continue to have to, let's say, pay for water that should have been shut off. They thought was shut off and now they're incurring that additional expense on an ongoing criminal event.
We can certainly add to our process, making sure the landlord owner is notified in the instances when police is involved. That's pretty rare because by the time we get to pulling the meter, oftentimes, the tenant's in the wind and probably running out frankly, on the landlord as well as us.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I, I can imagine that, that, that is the, you know, it's the dog chasing the tail at that point. It's pretty hard to, to catch it every time. And, and tenants are knowingly going to then move to another jurisdiction or, or create the very same problem for another landlord. Dual notification, I think, is one of the paramount pieces that, that they're asking for. I can only say that, that as an individual that has a, a renter that I see after, I make sure that monthly, that, that individuals pay their utilities along the way and they have to show proof that they've, that they've paid it. That's a, one prudent way of doing business in today's society where individuals become more mobile on you. And contracts, I disagree with anyone saying that a contractor or a lease is only good for one year. The lease is a term in which has been agreed upon contractually between two parties. So, you know, the collections or how you collect the, your debt is, is certainly paramount. But I don't believe that it, it should be all the responsibility of the, of the property owner when, again, when they haven't even been notified, you know, over a course of time. It's kind of hard to come back three years later and say, pay up on a, on a past debt. That's difficult once you're in business.
Okay, I've got two more cards and then I'll probably close the public session. It's going to be Jaswinder Singh here or Harjinder Kaur? Whichever one wants to speak. Okay, is that was the same concern? Okay, is that what the same concern? Okay, then you would just get on the list of the names and go chat with them and, you help her out there. And then also Rajwant Kaur? Yes.
I have the same issue.
Okay, then, you've got right there, just, anybody that has the same types of things and would like to do some resolution of this, actually, we'll probably go on to another item pretty soon, meet with them and set up an appointment, a time to come in. Okay, with that...
So, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, Mr.
Close the public session, bring it back to the council to have any more comments or questions for Robin or staff in any way?
So, Robin, in the future, we will, like, when it's three months, we will notify the property owner?
Yes, as long as we have the owner's information in our utility database. That's why I'm interested in reviewing each account individually for those that are here tonight, to see if we have their information in our database, in which case, it would be unusual for us to not reach out to them. My staff is pretty assertive in trying to contact people and make them aware of any balance and collect payment.
Would this, some of these changes have to come before the council for an ordinance update or anything?
No, this is already included in the ordinance. What is changing is me bringing them to you formally and requesting a resolution authorizing me to place them on the property tax rolls.
Thank you.
And as I mentioned, if this is a procedure that city council agrees with, then I would bring these back annually each year.
And then, Robin, we've been doing this for a while. Were we asking the tenants to show us their rental agreement in 2014?
Yes, we were.
Okay. Thank you.
To the mayor.
Yes.
I didn't want to make any of my comments sound like that I feel that the city is responsible for doing the business of the business person or the landlords. That's not what the intent of my comments are. The intent of my comments are, we should do everything to facilitate their business as any other business in Yuba City, in allowing them to know when there is debt that is owed on a property, so they can also help mitigate that and be a partner of sorts with the city. I agree with, you know, trying to streamline, reduce the costs, at the same time, bring the revenues to the responsible party, or from the responsible party to the city, and not spreading those costs against the general ratepayer for specific utilities.
Thank you. My last comment, before I read the names of some of the letters, people that sent letters, is that I have a few rentals, and I've had to pay the bills and stuff, and it irritates me the heck, and that I have to pay tenants' responsibilities, so unfortunately, as it is, it's a business. Business is profit-loss, and the sensitivity of the loss is very high with me, as I can tell with everybody else, so the pain is there. But we'll refine this as we go, since it was new since 2014, to get this refined, and to address it every year is the right procedure, I believe, that we should do. So, in my opinion, we'll make that decision as a group at another time. But now I'll move on to reading the names of people that sent letters. Yes.
You already represented her.
Oh, yeah, okay. Gary Loughlin had sent. One of them was already represented, for Laureen Martinez was already, somebody here spoke on that. Mrs. Sharon Hansen, Julie Baldwin, and Sean Vandusen, Shauna Vandusen had sent letters, and that are, I just needed to call out that we did receive some letters also on this issue. With that, we need to work on adopting, whoops, where is it at here? I need to get back to my, some action and decision on this resolution.
I have a camera also.
Okay, well, you can present it to the clerk afterward, and that should have been presented during this open time previously, but we've closed the public part of it, but it'll definitely be accepted into the record. So, you can just go ahead and take it over to her now, if you wish.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify one thing. Pardon me, Mr. Buckland.
Go ahead, ma'am. You can still go.
There have been, we always look for reasonableness at the staff level, and I know your council does, too. There have been a lot of good points raised this evening. As we implement, there will be bumps and grinds in the process. This was adopted by your council in terms of making the landlords responsible some time ago. I do believe this is the right direction to go in terms of the responsibility for the ultimate payment. That said, there have been a lot of good points raised. Robin Bertagnar, finance director, has met with a lot of people, so should you decide to go forward in this direction, my request, that might need to be clarified by our city attorney, is that you provide some clarification that affords our finance director the ability to amend any of these amounts downward based upon her individual meetings with the subject property owners, and as it's deemed appropriate. Because I wouldn't want you, if you decide to go in this direction, just to adopt the list as it stands here tonight, because people have raised points. It sounds like maybe there are some arrangements that can be found with our finance director. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to clarify that, I think I already said, pursuant to the state statute and our ordinance, the process that we would follow, we'd adopt the resolution, which has the report attached to it, that lists the various parcels of properties, and associates those with the associated delinquent charge. That, in turn, is sent to the county auditor, and they put that on their tax rolls. So, my point is, we're adopting this report that's attached to the resolution, and that lists the properties and the dollar amounts. If the council's not comfortable with that, then we need to amend that. The only additional issue that gets complicated is pursuant to state statute, it says we're supposed to forward this report, if it's adopted by the council, prior to August 10th of each year. And I don't know what the Sutter County Auditor, if they're beholden to that time period or not, so that's just another, like I say, complication in this process.
I'm confident that we can meet with folks soon and go through the account history and try to resolve any issues that seem reasonable to be resolved.
We don't have August 1st, that's National Accounts.
So, we need to be able to put some wording change in there to allow the current list in there to be adjusted and amended, to be the ones that still remain delinquent?
We want to delegate that authority to the finance director to make the appropriate revisions to the report.
To the report, okay. So, we know that, we know what we want to get done, so somebody want to come up with a...
All right.
Okay, I know he's good at doing this. That's why I'm pointing.
Move to adopt a resolution for the inclusion of the delinquent charges as modified by consent of this board, giving jurisdiction to our finance director, to modify and change that upon meeting with individuals that are on that list, in which she deems necessary to reduce...
As she deems appropriate.
As she deems appropriate to reduce, to meet the collection of those charges. And penalties for water and sewer service on the secured tax rule in the same manner as general taxes, and direct that a lien also be placed on subject properties. The attachments to that would be the exhibit as modified of the delinquent accounts, and Exhibit B, a sample of the delinquent letter, and then the resolution authorizing the collection of delinquent accounts. I'm no attorney, but thank you...
We know that you'll...
Tim, for helping me speak.
Welcome. You do a very good job.
Oh, thank you, sir.
So, we do have a motion, and that's giving Robin discretion on the list as to what the final list would be after meeting with the citizens, case by case. And yours was the motion, so we need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, seen a motion and a second. All in favor?
Question real quick.
Oh, yeah, good question, yes.
The motion was just to allow her authority, or just to approve the entire?
No, the whole thing. He quoted the whole thing.
All right.
And then with the modification.
All right.
And then, of course, the acceptance of the letters into the record, too. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, four one. Okay, it moves forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll let the people leave that. Give us a little time. Moving on to number six, bid opening, which has been modified as to postpone the bid award, perhaps, get some information of the project and reasoning from Kevin Bradford that has been living this for a few years. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Yes, unfortunately, tonight, we have a significant change in the staff recommendation for Item Six. Based on information we received yesterday afternoon regarding a pending bid protest, staff is now recommending tonight that council postpone award of the Fifth Street Bridge Replacement Project contract to a later date, to allow staff sufficient time to evaluate the possible bid protest. So with that, I'll just quickly review the bid results and our analysis of those bid results, and then talk a little bit about the bid protest. So, the Fifth Street Bridge Replacement Project was advertised on May 2nd, or May 12th, 2017. Plans and specifications were provided to local bidder exchanges and contractor exchanges, with eight contractors actually purchasing plans and specifications. Of those eight, on July 6th, five of them submitted bids, and you can see there that they range from a low of about fifty-seven million from MCM Construction out of North Highlands, to, and then the second low from Flatiron West out of Benicia of about sixty-four million. We had a third one around seventy-eight, and then a couple up around ninety. So the first thing we note, there's quite a large spread there between the high and low bids. We think that's a direct result of the permitting challenges of this particular project. There's a four-month window that contractors are able to work within the main river channel, and then there's also a period during the winter season when we need variances approved by the Central Valley Flood Protection Board to allow work to occur within the levees. So, I think a lot of those, the uncertainties with possible permitting challenges are resulting in the spread that we're seeing. The low bid is actually a little less than five percent over the engineer's estimate in this bidding climate. That seems like a minor victory, I think, on our part. All five of the contractors are very highly qualified bridge contractors to perform the work. With MCM's low bid, we did note three minor bid irregularities. The first was a failure to extend line item prices for several bid items in the bid form. The second was a miscalculation of the total bid amount. That resulted in about a ten thousand dollar savings to the city. And I contacted MCM, and they were willing to stand by their bid, even with that slightly lower bid amount. And then the third was a failure to provide complete information for listed subcontractors. They specifically did not list contract amounts and items of work that they were going to subcontract for a few of the seven subcontractors they listed. So, staff consulted with legal counsel regarding those bid irregularities, and based on that consultation, I was prepared to recommend waiving those as immaterial, minor irregularities, and awarding the contract to MCM. That's the way the staff report is written. And then yesterday afternoon, we received the notice from Flatiron West, who's the second low bidder, that they intend to file a bid protest, and our council has worked with their attorneys to assure that that will be submitted by tomorrow close of business. Initial discussions with Flatiron is that they believe there are additional irregularities in MCM's bid that we have not addressed in the staff report, and that those irregularities result in an advantage to MCM that the other bidders were not afforded, which means that we would not be able to waive those. So our legal counsel is advising that we postpone this award to provide time to evaluate the bid protest and make an informed recommendation on how to proceed. And so, next steps, legal counsel will review the protest once we receive it with staff, and we would like to bring a recommendation to council at a later date. Some possible outcomes are, one, that we would reject the Flatiron bid protest and wind up waiving the immaterial errors in MCM's bid and award the contract to MCM. The second is, accept the bid protest from Flatiron. We would have to deem MCM's bid as non-responsive, and then we'd have a couple of different options. One would be to reject all the bids and rebid it, the entire project, or the second would be to award to Flatiron as the lowest responsible bidder submitting a responsive bid. So unfortunately, some bad news, a little hiccup in the process, but with that, I'm open to any questions.
Any questions, comments from council members? Councilman Buckland.
Through the mayor. Kevin, what would, give me an idea what the timeline looks like on this.
Yeah, so, if we go with, if we receive the bid protest and find that it's meritless, staff would definitely be interested in scheduling a special council meeting, not waiting until the regularly scheduled next meeting, which would be August 15th. So we would look at probably a delay of a couple of weeks in that scenario. If the bid protest is, has some merit to it, and we accept it, that could take a little longer to work out the details of how to proceed with either rebidding the project or awarding to Flatiron. At most, probably another month, month and a half.
If there was a rebid, would MCM be precluded from bidding in, on a future bid?
No.
That's all the questions I have right now.
Any other questions or comments?
My only comment is, I believe we ought to set, at least at the closest available date, a tentative special meeting to build a ward of bid.
And I wouldn't mind that at all, myself. I'd support that.
It'd be, yeah, I mean, just a tentative date that we could, that we could come together and...
What is as soon as that we could get this evaluated and come to a resolution to where we could come back as a council? where we could come back as a council and make a decision to award or not?
Are you asking me or the city manager?
City manager, you. What's the process? Because that's a collaborative discussion.
Well, since he said the attorneys need to review it, I think the city attorney would be the most appropriate party to answer your question.
That's a hard, hard question to answer because I can't anticipate the future as to.
Right.
What's going to happen with both sides. And typically, what happens is, we've directed and they agreed, Flatiron to file their bid protest by close of business day tomorrow.
Correct.
Then, we will then notify MCM, give them the protest. They then have an opportunity to file a response. And then typically, Flatiron will then file a response. Then, at that point, you know, we're sort of, along the way, we're giving them deadlines, but, under which they have to come back to. They have to be reasonable. Usually, you give approximately five days in between each time.
Okay.
Then it'll take some, once we get all the data, all the responses, then staff and the attorneys will analyze it. You know, I'm just guessing. I was, I was hoping that we would be able to get back, I was not as optimistic as Kevin. I was looking at the next regulatory scheduled meeting is August 15th. I was hoping to get everything done, come back at that time. If we get it done earlier, we certainly will bring it back earlier. So I don't know if, if I'm real excited about a tentative special meeting date, I'm not really sure what that means. You know, we only need 24 hours' notice. I would prefer that we wait to see what happens and try to schedule as soon as we can, once we get all the information. That's just my, my recommendation.
The only reason I wanted a tentative date is to put some pressure on the timeline.
You should know him by now.
I figured that.
You have the most motivated employee behind that podium over there to drive this project forward. And I have no doubt that once he gets everything together, he'll be down in the city manager's office asking for a 24-hour notice for a meeting, so.
One potential scenario we discussed at the staff level was possibly scheduling it prior to the citywide night out, August 1st.
Have an afternoon.
If we could, I presume everybody would be available for that particular event.
That'd be August 1st, early, and then we go out and visit the citizens.
But again, I'm probably overly optimistic.
Yeah, well, so I guess, do we set a time or a date or anything? I think we just be ready for that 24-hour notice for that day.
Exactly.
Be ready for it. So, kind of announcement to the council to watch. And other than that, it'll be the 15th, most likely. I don't like it either, but. We want to get this going. Thank you very much for that presentation. A little different than what we wanted today. Okay, moving on, we have a ordinance, number seven, rezoned of 8.7 acres property located on the north side Franklin Road, approximately 575 feet west of State Route 99. And this is the second reading. Arnold Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Arnold Rodriguez, Development Services Director. This is the second reading for the rezone application of approximately 8.7 acres, just across the street from the Winko Shopping Center. The northern two-thirds of the property would be rezoned from the Community Commercial Zone District to the single-family residential zone district. The southern half of the property is currently zoned for community commercial uses. However, this request would amend that. It would maintain the C2. However, it would, it would attach an overlay district in the form of a planned development because the proposal calls for a vertical and horizontal mixed-use project, which is unique to Yuba City. So the southern half would house 36 multifamily residential units. And right along Franklin Road, it would have approximately 15,000 square feet of retail slash office uses. The 36 units and the 15,000 square feet on the southern portion, right along Franklin Road, would be distributed amongst four buildings, whereas the northern two-thirds of the property would have 53 single-family homes. They would be detached homes. It would be a private street system. There would be a homeowner association with it. And as part of the Phase 1 project, the developer would be required to develop the approximately 160 feet of OG Way, which is currently located at the intersection or the signalized exit and entrance into the Winko Shopping Center. So with that being said, staff is recommending that the council approve the, or adopt the ordinance this evening, which would include waiving the second reading. And there is one minor error in the ordinance that was delivered in the packet. It incorrectly states that the ordinance was, was going to be adopted July the 17th rather than July the 18th. And obviously, tonight's meeting is the 18th, not the 17th. So that's on page three, the final sentence of the ordinance. So with that being said, staff's ready to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Any questions, comments from the council? Seeing none, I am looking for action.
Move to approve staff's recommendation.
Wait a minute. I'm going to give anybody in the, thank you for the, but anybody in the audience would like to speak on this?
All right.
At all? Seeing none? I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none? Unanimous? And waiving the second reading? Okay, public communication, you are welcome and encouraged. Oh, by the way, I'm sorry, Arnaldo, on your name. I don't know, that faux pas just hit me. It was, whoa. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed in the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinion of the group. We have some written requests. First of all, John Munger and Rob Thompson regarding Sites Reservoir product, project. And then after that, will be Richard Hobbs on code enforcement after they're finished. And they get five minutes, at least.
Get organized here. Yeah, I got copies. Good evening, Mayor, John Munger. And also, good evening, council members. I'm John Munger with Garden Highway Mutual Water Company, in which we are a participant in the Sites Reservoir Project. Like to talk to you tonight about Sites Reservoir. I mean, as you've heard lately, alls we've been hearing about is Oroville. And want you to know that there's actually another project out there that's going through a very important process. And I'm here before you tonight to ask for a letter of support for the Sites Reservoir Project as they go through the Water Commission process. And that application's going to be turned in on August 14th. Here with me tonight is Rob Thompson. He's with Sites Authority. So any questions that I can't answer, he'd be able to do that. Sites Reservoir is an off-stream storage project. It's 10 miles west of Maxwell. It's a locally-driven project done by a group of many different water companies and agencies here locally. And an important part of this project, it's a off-stream reservoir, like I said, and it's got many environmental benefits attributed to this off-stream reservoir. So I have a brief PowerPoint presentation. Just like to run you through that and see if you have any questions as we go through that. So as we go through it, please ask me anything you may, may need to know. So we're looking at the location of the project here. It's, like I said, 10 miles west of Maxwell and Colusa County. On this slide, we have all the different members and participants here locally. Those that are in blue are the members or on the board of the Sites JPA. And then the other ones below it, there are participants within the authority. As you can see, there's lots of local, here in Northern California, lots of local members. As you can see, the benefits, some are listed here. Lot of reliable water for California homes, farms, and businesses. A big part of this project is environmental flows for native fish. Improved water quality contributes to California's renewable energy goals. They can help with groundwater recharge, flood management, and important water for Pacific flyway habitat for migratory birds and native species, and also recreational opportunities. So as you may recall, in November 2014, a Prop 1 bond was passed. And a big part of that bond process, and one of the major projects that were, that was discussed in that time, was Sites Reservoir. And so now, the whole process of getting that funding is starting to gear up. And up to that, the state can contribute up to 50% of the cost. And based on this slide, you can see that there's certain parameters that have to be met in order for the state to participate. So, for example, in 2016, we could have had 532,000 acre-feet of environmental water if this project was already built. I know this slide's hard to see. I gave you copies in front of you. So it does lay out the timeline of how this project is going to go through the process. Essentially, we're really gearing up to try to start construction with permitting in 2022. So with that, I'd like to formally request a letter of support from the city council for this project and for the Water Commission project. Here to answer any questions you may have as well.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Munger at this time?
To the mayor?
Yes.
Is this the same project that someone Gallagher's pushing?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much.
Project's been around for a long time. Quite a few million dollars has been spent toward the environmental studies and all kinds of stuff to be put on the shelf and then asked again, to be done again. This has been something, actually, I think this project has been environmentally abused. And they should get some credits for that through the process. So all I know is it's, it's definitely qualified for all those benefits that you listed up there. Being a fisherman, I know that it will be able to allow the water to be cooler and colder in the rivers when the fish are running. Because crops like warm water, they don't like cold water. Otherwise, it affects them and their growth, especially rice. And so all the, all the nuances in there, this sites would actually fulfill many of the deficiencies and difficulties that it's already, that are out there in the community of environmental and ag and fishing and just all of it. So you know where I feel about it already. But the rest of the council has to weigh in on that. Anybody else? We will bring this to the staff to, for a decision on that and bring it to the council at another date. And we'll see what happens.
I would, I would just like to note that the applications do, or it's going to be submitted August 14th. So time is of the essence if a letter could be.
Is this something already within our policy, previous policy for water? Any way we could?
Mr. Mayor, even the letter, if it was submitted, if you chose to submit a support, could be submitted after our submittal of the 14th and still be considered by the California Water Commission. So it doesn't necessarily drive your schedule.
Right. Well, usually, we need a policy that kind of is already, to line it with if we're going to do it that, and then I can just sign it, but.
So we do have a meeting, as was referenced earlier, on August 15th, if that would suffice. We'd bring that back for their formal approval. We could have that letter that signed that evening, subject to council approval, that is.
As you can readily tell from this schedule, a little humor, the process is going to be going on with the Water Commission through about this time next year.
Okay.
So sooner is better. This is a Northern California-centric project, as you could see by the participation. It's not driven as in 2001, when this project was called the North of Delta Offstream Storage Project. It was driven as a supply project for the whole state of California with more water heading south. Since the authority has taken over responsibility for this project, you can see that this is a Sacramento Valley-centric project now, with approximately half of the water going to water agencies in the SAC Valley. And all of the water for environmental purposes would be used either in the Delta or all the way up to Shasta, provide cold water pool for the salmon that you're so fond of.
Yep, I'm familiar with that.
Yeah.
Pretty much the thing. But the public's going to need to know. Yeah, I guess the staff know what we would like. And thank you. Appreciate your bringing the awareness and the timeline to us.
Very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Richard? Yes, sir. Richard Hobbs. Your turn. And sometimes the meetings get very lengthy. No problem.
Hey, so I got a little concern with a compliance order that I received for my residence on Skyline Drive.
Okay.
I have a, one of those metal carports that you see a lot of. And I was, got a compliance order to remove it because it's too close to the property line. And it's my understanding, I've talked to Arnaldo about this, and he's a great guy, by the way. I love talking. We had quite a visit. But anyway, I really don't see the problem with it. I mean, if you have anything parked there, like a lot of people do under these, because we've done a little research and there's quite a few of them in Yuba City. So, you know, you can park a motorhome, and we use it for shade to cover our belongings, you know, our cars and our boats and RVs. And there's quite a few of them around the city. My neighbor, Mr. Tompkins, has got one. He lives across the street. He's been, had the same compliance order. But I really, I don't understand the problem. The fire department, from what I understand, they don't have a problem with it. It doesn't affect them in any way. But it's just a, I think Arnaldo told me it was a state code.
We adopt state codes.
Yeah.
State comes out with them, Title 24 and all kinds of stuff that we, we can increase them but not go below those.
Mm-hmm.
And so.
So I really don't understand what the problem with people having these carports for shade to protect their valuables, you know, their belongings, their RVs. You know, there's some of them that have half-million-dollar RVs parked under them. If the shade wasn't there, the RV still would be. So I, hopefully, we can keep ours. That's why I'm talking to you guys. I've talked to Arnaldo about this. I talked to Mr. Dirks about it. And well, that's why I'm coming to you guys, to see if there's a possibility that we can still keep them. They're not an eyesore.
If you're, for your consideration. At this point, that I will go and at least review it with staff. Okay. And he'd probably put all of us on alert to at least ask a little detail, more detail on it. So from the ministerial side, which is the regulatory side of it, and see, you know, what's, what the actual title of regulation is.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll at least look into it.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, if your council would desire, this, this matter has been looked into by Arnaldo Rodriguez, and he can provide, if you desire. this matter has been looked into by Arnaldo Rodriguez, and he can provide, if you desire. I just want to be respectful of Mr. Hobbs' time.
Okay.
In that not having to have you necessarily come back. I don't know if there's an easy answer to this, and that's what I fear. I'm concerned that you may have come here this evening to come before an elected body that is in charge of implementing a code that's a state and international code over which they don't have any discretion. And that's a really awkward circumstance to be put in. Not, it's not your fault. I'm not saying that at all because you have a fair request. I just want to have staff, if the council desires, give some context as to why our hands might be tied on this. Because I think you present a very straightforward ask.
Well, you know, we've done some research just in the northern part of the city. And we found over 100 homes. I have a list of like five pages of addresses.
No, I think the issue's pervasive. It's a matter of whether or not it's allowed by the International Building Code from health and safety. I think you're absolutely right. In my neighborhood alone, I can walk around and probably see a half dozen of them.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, so and if you, you know, if you need more addresses, let me know. We can.
I don't think I want to put Arnaldo on the spot right at this time. I'm not sure. You don't mind? Okay. Go for it.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Arnaldo Rodriguez, Development Services Director. Mr. Hobbs is correct that him and I met probably 10 or so days ago. We met for quite a long period. So a couple of things just to offer a little bit of perspective. The city has recently experienced a relatively large influx in code enforcement cases. Some of that, quite frankly, it's the YC 311 system, which is an excellent tool for our community members to report cases. Some of the challenges that staff experiences is, as you're receiving those cases, we obviously want to be responsive to community members. And what happens on occasion is if one community member is cited, oftentimes they'll say, hey, well, my neighbor is doing the same thing, or the guy two blocks around the corner. For example, just to, just to offer some perspective to Mr. Hobbs' situation, last month, there were 16 very similar cases identical to Mr. Hobbs that were reported. So last month, in the month of June, there were 16 for buildings without the benefit of city permits. This is a slide that offers, in terms of the recent influx I was talking about, going back to 1987, you have 2016, 2017 on the tail end. This is a photo of Mr. Hobbs' property. I deleted the addresses. So if his house looks a little discolored in some places, that's only because I was removing his address using Photoshop. His house, it's, it's a very well-maintained home. So this photo was taken this morning at about 7:30 in the morning. Again, it's, in his particular case, it's not an aesthetic issue. It's part of the challenges. We have the zoning regulations, which our local zoning code states that you cannot have a building on the side property line closer than five feet to the property line. In Mr. Hobbs' case, it's probably 18 inches from the property line. So it's two feet from the property line. So the City Council, through the variance process or the planning commission, does have the authority to waive those five feet. However, that's only one of the items that's really at issue. The second issue, which the council does not have discretion on, that's the California State Building Code. California State Building Code, the City Council adopts it. With that being said, even if the council did not adopt it, quite frankly, our hands are tied. We, we, we being an extension of the state when it comes to the California Building Code, are mandated to implement it. So again, in this particular case, again, it was a code enforcement issue. City staff does very, very little trolling in code enforcement. And what trolling means is we're going up and down the roads looking for cases. It would probably be ideal if we had those resources. However, historically, we have not done that practice with the exception being of certain cases, snipe signs, abandoned shopping carts, graffiti. When we see those issues, we are very proactive. And we've also been proactive on a handful of streets. For example, Walton Avenue, Garden Highway, we have been proactive in those neighborhoods because we've received numerous complaints over the years from business owners, from property owners saying, can you please clean up our neighborhoods? So along certain roads, we have been proactive. This was not, this was not one of those cases. This is directly across the street. Again, there are no addresses on any of those homes. Again, it's, it's, this one's probably a little bit closer than five feet. But at the same time, a couple of other examples. This is one in our community. It's in the front yard. This is a relatively large structure. It's on a very prominent street. I think a lot of people probably know exactly where this is at. This is another one where we've contacted the property owner. This is another example, which is, looks slightly larger than, or taller than Mr. Hobbs. Here, here's another example where this is right in the front yard. This creates multiple issues. And one other one, this is another example. So while there, while there are a lot of them that are metal, that's not to say that they're all metal. And however we treat one, one community member, we have to be equitable in terms of our application of the law. And in this particular case, aesthetically, probably doesn't look as nice as the other ones. However, in terms of the setback issue, because it's not a matter of not having the ability to obtain a permit for his building, that's not the issue. The issue in his particular case, he simply doesn't have the space in terms of where he wants to put it. The other challenge that Mr. Hobbs has is at his parcel, there's probably no good place to put it. Because his parcel size doesn't lend itself very well because he simply cannot meet the setbacks. That's, that's part of the challenge. The larger parcel, the more opportunities you have. In Mr. Hobbs' case, it's a conventional, single-family home, which is probably 65% of the homes in our community, which make it challenging to erect these types of structures.
So Mr. Rodriguez, in the case specifically of Mr. Hobbs, you know, in my best-case scenario, we figure out a way where his neighbor says, I don't mind. I know that may not work in practical reality, but let's just say. What is the building code issue, though? You mentioned that's the one that the council does not have discretion on. He mentioned that the fire department, and I don't know who made the representation, but it's a small community, so I trust that is probably the case. Fire department says there's no issue. What's the building code issue?
So when buildings are closer than a certain number of feet to the property line, which in Mr. Hobbs' case, I think he has two feet, then what's required, it's a firewall. And a firewall cannot have any openings, and it also has to exceed two feet above the parapet of the house. So in Mr. Hobbs' particular case, you would take the overall height, say it's 10, it's probably 10 or 12 feet in height, it's 10 feet. You would have a solid wall running along his property line. On top of that, it would have to exceed two feet above that. So you would have a 12-foot wall running alongside of his property line for the distance of his property line. And his neighbor would obviously have the same thing. So that, that probably falls along the line more of an aesthetic issue if that's something that the community would, would, would really be in favor. And you would have a lot of tall walls throughout the community.
Then zero lot line regulations come in and complicate things and.
They do. So the building code, so I oversimplified the building code. That's just.
It gets really.
There's a little bit more to it with buildings and everything.
So, Mr. Mayor, back to your original point. And I, I'm glad, I appreciate you affording the opportunity for Arnaldo to present. That said, back to your original point of sending it back to staff. Obviously, we'll have a conversation with the fire department, staff, and ask what their issues are and put together a little synopsis and see where we can go from here. I can't promise, you know, a rose garden, that it'll be, it'll be perfect. But I know that we take everything seriously, from $60 million bids on bridges to carports next to homes. So, thank you.
There have been other communities that have tried to at least address some of this potential issue like this happening to where any metal building company that wants to build or put it in there or to be constructed, there's some kind of a notification of lot lines or some kind of, especially if it's a distributor, that they have, they are notified that they do business within our community. They, you know, there's these regulations that they're going to have to comply with. And that only mildly alleviates the situation because people just do it anyway. And they just ignore that. But that has been done in the, in other communities. So, yes.
On my behalf and my neighbors, we had no idea that we figured it was a portable building. We had no idea.
Right. And that's, that's the majority of the case. Right. And that's the majority of the case, and that's what happens.
The other thing to keep in mind is, I mean, just small research, we found over 100 homes, you know, just in the northern part of the city. There's no telling how many.
We understand. That's all I can say. We get it. You know, we live out there, too, and we'd like to do some, sometimes some things, and we find out later and we have to, you know, we have to comply. And we don't have a choice. We do something wrong, we get it fixed quickly. At least I do. With that, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for coming to us and discussing it. That's, and using the soundboard that's your, of your electeds. Appreciate it. Okay. Now, I'll move on to number nine, which is, "Appears of interested citizens, member of the public may address the City Council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing the general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes." Is there anybody else here that has not given written for speaking with us? Seeing none, we'll move on to Consent Calendar. Consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. To the mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to have number 15 removed for presentation and discussion.
With that, we have a request for 15 to be removed and discussed publicly. Looking for a motion to adopt 10 through 14, if there's no other to be removed.
So moved.
Okay, got a second?
Second.
All right. So we've got all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous vote for 10 through 14. 15, we have a presentation. Arnaldo, again. Boy, a busy night for you. I can guess why this is being removed. Article in the paper or something?
All right, correct. So this evening, Mayor and members of the council, we, staff does have a presentation. However, I'm not sure if there's a specific question or if you'd like me to go through the presentation. It's, okay.
Yeah, go ahead and roll it.
So, so staff has prepared a letter for signature by, by Mayor Stan Cleveland opposing some of the proposed cuts under the president's proposed budget. Specifically, the president has made some proposed cuts to HUD funding, specifically for some of the programs that the city relies on for funding as well as our partner here in the community, being the housing authority here in the city. Those programs historically have targeted disadvantaged community members, specifically the disabled, senior citizens, veterans, indigent families with, with, really with special needs or people that lived in impoverished communities. Specifically, here for Yuba City, directly, the city on annual basis receives roughly $685,000. Under the president's proposed budget, the CDBG program is proposed to be cut significantly. And so that would be a direct hit here for our community, directly through the city because those dollars are channeled through the city. The president's also proposing to eliminate the home program. The city currently has about $225,000 or maybe around $200,000 now. And those dollars are used for first-time home buyers who cannot qualify on their own. However, they have adequate credit scores and everything else, and they're obviously employed. And then we simply help them traditionally with, with the Down Distance Program. And then there's also proposed cuts to the Section 8 Housing Program and to some of the other housing programs. The Housing Authority had approached the city a couple of weeks ago and had asked the city to prepare a letter of support opposing some of those cuts. So staff prepared a letter. That's before the council. We do have a representative from the Housing Authority, Mrs. Gil Allen, who can speak directly to the proposed funding cuts and how that would impact her and her agency and their constituents. And so that concludes my presentation, unless the council has any specific questions for me.
Gil? Briefly what your analysis and some stuff is. I served with you or on the housing for, what was it, nine years?
Yeah.
And brought it from a subsistence squatting, pretty much, and to hand up, get you out and buy a house, and it was awesome to be part of that.
We, I've been the CFO of the Housing Authority for almost 19 years now. Seen a lot of changes in funding. What I want to address are just the ones that are specifically for us. The first one is the Public Housing Operating Fund. That is what keeps us operational. Pays for staff, pays for general paper pens and pencils and things like that of the program. When you move down to the second one, the Capital Fund, that's the one that has the most concern for us because that's maintaining our properties. It's not building anything new. All it is is making sure that we maintain the structures. We have a lot of deferred maintenance because they're cutting our budgets. And in some cases, we come to you for CDBG funds to be able to help us. So you've just approved some funding for Kingwood Commons for roofing, and that's what that goes to. The next one is the Section 8 program, which is also known as the Housing Choice Voucher Program. That's also a huge one for us. HUD has never cut our HAP funds. Those are the funds that are paid to the landlords. They've never prorated those. They're now prorating them. This year, they've prorated it 97%. That means 3% of the vouchers that we had, that we were assisting people, isn't going to be there for us. And Gus is actually on vacation, so that's why he asked me to come and answer any questions that you might have. But it's a huge concern for me, and it's a huge concern, obviously, for him as the executive director, in being able to maintain affordable housing for the people in the community. And in some cases, such as the Section 8 program, these are individuals who are being assisted, are assisting our landlords in the community. It's not just us. So we would ask that the council provide support to the Housing Authority as your housing authority, where the consolidate, we've just changed our name to Regional Housing Authority. But we serve the Sutter, City of Live Oak, City of Yuba City. We go up to Nevada County. We go over to Calusa. We've had others contact us to see whether or not we could help with their programs as well. Any questions?
Any questions from council members?
The only one that I will have is that, well, actually, a couple of things here. So it looks to me like basically it would be, market rate is what it would end up being for the people to pay because they would have no assistance to do that. And so what happens to the affordability? Market to scale, you know, their income. And, and also some of the requirements that we have to have affordable housing that are imposed upon us by different levels of government. And if, I feel that if a government is going to require us to comply with their regulations, that they better have some skin in the game, and they need to pay at least a portion of that. Otherwise, quit requiring some of this stuff for us to have to do. And so that's where an article that came out in a paper does not understand the complexity of this issue is that we are, we are just trying to tell the government, if you're going to do unto us, we want you to pay for it, as much as we can get out of you.
Just a couple.
Which we're the government. They're basically stealing the money from us and giving us a pittance back.
Well, just a couple of points that I came up with today. In 2016, 86% of non-elderly, non-disabled households, who were receiving HUD subsidy are either working. are either working, have recently worked, or looking for work. So that addresses that article of, you know, this is, we're just giving away free housing. Also, too, with public housing, 30% of income of people who are in public housing, they pay 30% of their income back. So nobody gets free housing. Everybody has to pay.
Right. And it's based on a basic formula that the real estate and financial planning has established over many decades, is about 30% is reasonable. Unfortunately, 40% is sometimes is what it's gone up to for even the general public. Yes?
Through the mayor.
You want to talk?
If we could go back, I believe it's one slide. Thank you very much. Why did I ask for this to be pulled? Because there, I don't even call it a, an article in the paper. It's an opinion.
It's an opinion.
And individuals possess at least two things that I'm aware of, and one of those is an opinion. And I'll leave the other one unnamed at this point. But to paint a council as liberals by any member that takes time to write into the paper, that is an employee of the Appeal Democrat, I find highly objectionable when this is our community. This is Yuba City. These are individuals, veterans, individuals with disabilities. As the mayor said, one of the big things that's going on here is we have certain requirements. And then for the president to take back or for HUD to even consider moving funding away from the local communities is not an action of either a conservative or a liberal. It's a money savings issue at the federal government that has a direct impact on our community, on our residents. Some of the programs could be deemed as liberal. Many of these are individuals that certainly are in the system, and as we heard, we have deferred costs currently going on just for the maintenance of properties. Why? Because there's constant cutback within that funding. This has been happening. I don't care if it was through a liberal administration or a highly conservative administration, the cuts have been coming. We need to take a stand, and if those regulations are going to be put in place, we need to take that stand and say, we need the funding for it. And that's why I would support this letter.
Okay, any other comments? So I would like to, I am looking for action on item 15.
Moved to approve.
And a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Our statement has been made. Thank you for being here tonight and chatting with us. Appreciate the perspective. General item, South Yuba City Annexation Election, presented by Steve Krieger, our city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. There's been a lot of time and effort that's been put into this matter. I'll provide a synopsis. If you'd like to go into any level of detail, just let me know. Before you, on the screen is the subject area, referred to as the South Yuba City Annexation. This was initiated in April of 2016 by your city council. It involves roughly 1,400 developed and undeveloped parcels and about 625 acres. So where has that gone since April of 2016? It's found its way all the way to May of 2017, at which time the Local Agency Formation Commission, which is the local commission that oversees reorganizations of territory, changes in boundaries, and on that group, we have representation. Vice Mayor Diball sits on that. And pardon me if I'm forgetting another council member. You know, we have one. The county has two individuals. The city has one. Thank you. And so we have a direction to conduct an election within a one-year time period, and that would take us out to May 2018. Notably, that would be the end of the period, meaning an election would have to occur prior to that time and afford adequate time for LAFCO to continue to close the proceedings by May of 2018. So where does that put the city? The recommendation before you this evening is to proceed with an election for the November 7th timeframe. That is the possibility. Why that timeframe? There is consideration of using our county clerk due to the independence and really perceived and real objectivity of that role that we all have as the electorate. And so that would take us to the November 7th timeframe. Now, notably, this could occur at a different time. It could occur December. It could occur January. It could occur February. We believe at the staff level, though, if the council really would like to go to the election route, and we'll talk about alternatives in a moment, but if this is the route, this would be the preferred timeframe because we are all accustomed to participating in our elections in the November timeframe, and therefore it would afford the optimal number of people to turn out to vote on the matter. So it would be a mail ballot. If that election failed, one year would need to pass before a new application could be submitted. If there was a decision to withdraw the application, then resubmital can be, take place at any time. So what's really important to discuss tonight? It's really important to discuss alternatives. The first two alternatives have already really been addressed, the fact that you can call a special election at a time other than the November timeframe. The other is something that has been discussed off and on, and let me give context to this. First, I'll state it. Consideration requesting legislation to provide property owner election. Somewhat counterintuitively, the state law provides for this election that I've referenced to be among the voters, which seems to be the democratic way. That said, if my wife and I are renters in a property of the mayor's, and the mayor is saying, well, I'm for this because I see this as a benefit to my property to have it annexed, and my wife and I are renting, and we're both voters, and you live outside of the area, you can't vote on this issue, but my wife and I can, and we vote against it. And so we vote counter to what the property owner feels it is in his or her best interest. It just really, it tends to be confusing. You know, I've discussed it with the city attorney. This is the state law. This is what it says. So there is an alternative, and I don't, you know, I think your council deserves the opportunity to discuss this because some of these ideas have been raised among you. So this is not necessarily an original idea of staff's, but it's the idea of should there be a request for some type of legislation to be passed so that it affords the true property owner in the area the opportunity to elect, to annex into the city. So with that, as I mentioned, I'd be happy to provide any additional detail that you'd like, but I ask that you discuss the matter and then provide staff with the direction that you so prefer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any discussion from council on what has been presented?
To the mayor.
Please.
I'll start the conversation because I'm one of those that believes, after talking to property owners in that area, that they are entitled to a vote. They hold the financial interest in that area, and they feel, in one case, one of the families holds 10 properties down there, that they don't know, nor can they, other than going out and talking with their residents that are, their tenants, they can't influence the direction. So they're concerned that they would like their properties to come into the city and have full services. Those services being police would be the addition, and then any other benefits that would come along with assessment districts and things like that should sewer fail, and predominantly in the area in which the one or the family owns 10 rentals, they're concerned with the failure of their septic systems in there. So with that said, just in talking with those individuals, there has to be a better way to go about this than simply allowing the registered voter, which will now, as we saw the election results, let's just take those numbers, only seven, if we had a high voter turnout, 72% would turn out. It's a mail-in process, but again, the simple process of returning those can be pretty cumbersome on certain individuals. And I think the motivation is that we're going to be up against is the motivation of those that are opposed to the annexation at this point for various reasons. Not wanting to comply with code sections that the city may have and impose so properties don't look like a parking lot, multiple vehicles parked on lawns, and those type of things that the city takes great pride in making sure that those type of code violations aren't present everywhere. You know, they want maintenance of landscape areas within the county area that are poorly maintained now. And so, you know, I look at all these things, and individuals, the property owners, believe that by coming into the city, many of them that I've talked to, believe that their property values will increase as a result of being included into the city. Therefore, they'd like a voice in this.
To the mayor.
Steve, have we started any process about legislation doing this for us or getting this going or anything?
No, this is the first. It would take your council's direction to move in that. I guess to clarify, too, we haven't inquired.
Okay.
You know, we have not reached out to the senators or assemblyman's office.
And if we do do this, you have any idea how long this is going to be?
Well, it would be, obviously, not this year. It'd be something that we'd need to come into next year, which would be somewhere in the next year and a half timeframe, optimistically.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Yeah, that means we'd have to withdraw the application and be ready for, find out what the result of the legislation would be.
Well, the important thing, so the good news, we've brought this forward with adequate timeframe. Now, not for the November 7th election, right? If you really want to go down that path, I encourage you to step in that direction tonight. If not, and you want more time to consider it, you'll still, you'd still be have time to go forward with an election within the required timeframe, or take the alternative path to look at the special legislation. I always believe staff needs to make a recommendation, and so that's we did. I don't want to just leave with a quagmire, although this is, this is close. It's not an easy path.
My question, have there been other legislation where this has been done in the past for our community, or is this something new? I don't know.
And that's something we'd absolutely look into and evaluate.
Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. I guess I get a little excited on this. The system isn't right right now. The legislative attempt at this would right the property owner's rights in these cases, and I wouldn't ask for legislation. I wouldn't ask Gallagher's office or Nielsen's office for special consideration for our area only. I would be looking for a change to the state law as it applies to these annexations.
Well, I figured that out.
Yeah.
I knew where you were going.
So I don't see this as a huge battle because when you disenfranchise property owners, those are the individuals that are paying the bills for the state or to the state of California and local jurisdictions. They are entitled to be heard. They're entitled to be able to make decisions on their property, not have another individuals that's not a financial stakeholder make those decisions. So I would highly encourage that we continue down the path, but that that path be considering, trying to forward an attempted legislation.
I know that there's, and I'm not saying no to it. I just know that there have been those battles between landowners and renters based upon who has the rights based upon squatter's rights type of a thing, even though they are being, living there. So there is, there is a risk that I know because of other landmark decisions that have been made in the past, mostly in big cities, not in rural areas, but there have been. Anybody else want to discuss consideration of taking the number three path? Which means we would end up probably withdrawing this current application, correct?
If your council was interested in looking at the number three path, my recommendation would be that you not withdraw at this time. And you still have, frankly, you have by next May to hold the election, so it keeps that additional path open to you.
Okay. Yeah, in the beginning of the year.
Yeah, you could still seize the special election. My interest, though, is if for some reason your council tonight said, no, we really want to go forward with the election, no matter what, absent item three, then strike while the iron's hot. Do it now. If you want to consider the third, then we leave that option open for the time being, and then we would start looking into this alternative. And we're obviously happy.
I'm going to support the number three alternative and at least go the direction of finding out what can or cannot be done based upon, you know, the legislators and see what they have to say. Because we'll get, we'll find out from them the probability of something even being considered. That's, I'm looking for action to...
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll call it a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, one voting against. Order one pass.
Thank you, mayor. Members of the council. I think it was Councilman Cardozo was the may?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving on to 17, State Revolving Fund, Mandip Chohan. It's good to see you, Mandip. Make sure that the button is pushed. Mandip, make sure the button's pushed.
Okay, so this item 17 is a recommendation to adopt the required resolutions to submit the financial assistance application by the state. Water Resources Control Board to obtain the low-interest loan for the wastewater treatment facility improvement project, and that project is under design right now. And the submission of the important thing at this point is the submission of the application for financial assistance does not commit the city to any financial obligations at this time. So as far as the background concerns, just quick summary, the wastewater facility was constructed in the early '70s, and then it was expanded in 2005, and currently we have a permitted capacity of 10 and a half MGD. And currently, we have a permitted capacity of ten and a half MGD, and the flow is about six and, about six and a half MGD. So as we mentioned earlier, the project of improvement is under design through council's approval of, on November 1st, two thousand and sixteen, and was amended on February 7th. And it is, we are expecting that the design documents will be complete in October, November of two thousand and seventeen, about in a few months from now. So this aerial picture shows the major process units that we will be constructing the improvements on. In addition to that, the plant-wide electrical and control system will be, we will be making improvements to that. So few items that I would like to note at this time is that the bid market to construct the similar projects in this area has been highly unpredictable in the past five to six months. And it has been noticed that generally the bids are coming significantly higher than the engineers' estimates. And the financial assistance application for this project is based on the pre-design level estimates of twenty-two point eight million dollars. And the final design estimate shall be available in October. So there are other few projects under design with the other agencies, with the potential to go out to bid within the next six to nine months. And one example of that project is with the Sacramento Regional Wastewater Facility, they are planning to put a project out to bid, which is going to be about seven hundred million dollars in about January or February timeframe. And then we have another big project going in Oroville. And then a few other projects are in City of Brentwood, they're expanding their wastewater facility, about seventy million dollar projects. So the limited contractors, a lot of projects going on, and it is, it is hard for the, hard to, for the design engineers to predict what the bids are going to look like. And the staff is analyzing the situation and having a discussion with the design engineers and the other industry experts to strategically put the project out to bid so that we will have some good number of potential bidders. And the staff will return back to the council with the recommendation at the completion of the design. And at the same time, we will know from the State Water Resources Control Board about the status of our loan application. And then the staff will come back to the council with the additional, with the loan terms and conditions for the, to request traction related to the acceptance of the financial assistance agreement. So in summary, the staff will be returning to the council, number one, with an recommendation to advertise the project for bid, and number two, if our application has been approved by the loan application to, for further direction to accept that application. And if that application, if the board does not approve our application, because there is a potential as well, because of their availability of funding, then we may be looking for conventional financing in that time. So the recommendation right now is to adopt the resolutions that are recommended in the staff report. That will allow the staff to turn and complete the application package with the State Water Resources Control Board for the low interest financing of this project. At this time, any questions, I will be happy to answer.
Any questions from council members for Mandip? I do have one here real quick. Conventional financing, what rate is that at currently? You probably have already done a spot check on that at least.
It is about, I would expect about four percent, maybe Robin may correct me?
I was probably more in the range of three right now.
Okay.
But then you also have cost of issue.
Right. Right. So we're looking at, you know, one percent plus interest saving by going this route if we're approved.
Generally, the, in low interest loans comes approximately half the cost of conventional loans.
Okay. So that's a, I think, a prudent attempt to save the citizens as much taxpayers' money so we can do more projects and get some of this stuff upgraded.
Absolutely. In addition, this application will also put in a position, if there is any grant funding available, then this position, this application will also put us in a position to get the grant, even through this application, if it becomes available.
Okay, fantastic.
Yes.
Multiple possible benefits, thank you.
Yes.
Just for an application, that's awesome. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, like to have some action?
To the mayor?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to staff's recommendations?
I'm looking for a second.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous vote of support. Good job, Mandip.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mandip.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to business of the city council. The mayor and myself and the vice mayor, Pete Didball met to go over boards and commission applications, had a pretty good group on the planning. One person ended up being for the senior, excellent people, but, Terrell, I understand we have adopted some new policies and on background checks for our boards and commissions recently, could you?
Yes, I was reminded that council had requested this spring to start having background checks on all our appointees to boards and commissions, and I neglected to take that in consideration when I was scheduling the interviews. And so for the screening committee applications, we are recommending providing the background checks and bringing this item back to council on, at your next meeting on August 15th.
Yes, and it's all due to an incident that occurred earlier this year that we're, we're going to be from now addressing background checks for these commissions and boards. Okay, so we'll bring that back. With that, city council reports, Councilmember Buckland. You haven't done anything, have you?
Actually, it's been kind of slow, so. Went to the Gallagher-Nielsen Fix Our Loveys Rally that was attended by some nearly, I don't know, two hundred, two hundred and fifty individuals. Mike was there. Well, I mean, well attended, it was fairly warm, and I think the message is out and was beneficial in moving forward some projects down in Sacramento. I think the voice of this community is heard in Sacramento. It is certainly a wise voice, and it's a voice that won't go away if there is continued neglect towards some of the infrastructure needs that we have here. So that was a great event. Also attended the Sutter Animal Services Authority meeting and adopted basically this next year's budget moving forward, just a couple of amendments to how the line items will show, but we did adopt that budget. I did, I missed a homeless consortium meeting, but I'm sure that Councilmember Cardozo will catch everybody up to date on what occurred in that meeting. The Fourth of July party, a parade party, it was all a big party. I do want to say thank you to our Aero Squadron locally for the overhead air support in trying to quash some of the aerial display early in the Fourth of July period. They started flying on the first, and I think flew through the fourth. But the parade itself down in the town center was absolutely incredible, I think it was probably the largest so far over the course of years that it has been going on. It is so, it's so much fun to see the little kids, the bicycles, and everything else, and when you're done at ten thirty-one in the morning, have a hot dog prepared by the firemen. Nothing better on Fourth of July than to be part of a great community. I'll leave my comments unsaid tonight on the aerial displays of fireworks, with this exception, really, up to the eighth of July, folks, the Fourth of July is one day, it's one day. It's illegal to torch off anything in the air in the state of California, it's not a local law, it's state law, but doing it on the eighth is absolutely the most inconsiderate act that can occur within a neighborhood. All I can say is, we will catch you next year.
Okay, Councilmember Cardozo?
Okay, folks, it's been a long month, we didn't have a meeting two weeks ago, so I'll be quick.
There you go.
It's a long list. We'll start with meetings. Attended the school district liaison, liaison, liaison meeting, thank you. LAFCO, Economic Development Commission, Planning Commission, Sutter Animal Services Authority, Regional Leadership Team for the Homeless, Homeless Consortium, Regional Housing Authority, Gilizer Drainage, the Sutter Beach Flood Control Agency, and the Second Street Property Owners Meeting. Chamber events, Business Connection Breakfast, attended ribbon cuttings for Pete's Restaurant and Brewhouse, and for the UBSutter Arts Center, and also I attended the monthly ambassadors meeting. For community events, I was with council for a rally for the levy funding repairs, attended the summer at City Hall, attended the mock council, the mock council meeting and graduation ceremony, also had lunch and dinner with the students, so that was wonderful, seeing the youth today and probably being our bosses here in the future. I was there for the Fifth Street Bridge bid opening, the annual Fourth of July parade with council. I stopped by Goshia Aquatic Park to thank Joe for the donation for the day, shook his hand and said, thank you very much for that, for the wonderful event. There was a lot of people there, a lot. Attended a retirement party with the mayor for Ben Grossner, Fire Department, over twenty-five years of service. Attended UBC Downtown Association's annual meeting, also with the mayor for the new Board of Officers installation. Community outreach meeting hosted by Sutter County Supervisor Matt Conick at Shanghai Bin Park, that was a very fun evening. I'm glad that it was Matt instead of me, it was very exciting. Attended the first Thursday night downtown Pluma Street, Peach Bowl Dawn Breakers Toastmasters Club, attended, I was invited and attended the five-year anniversary summer barbecue for the Rinson family and friends. I worked the fireworks booth for Peach Bowl Lions Club. I have just been elected newly president of the Peach Bowl Lions Club for two thousand and seventeen eighteen, something else for me to do. I attended the fourteen Ford one-year anniversary celebration last week, that was a great event, their one-year anniversary, it was a very good turnout, and got to see what the houses were, what the folks live in, it's very clean, very good place. Marysville, Uba County's doing a great job, and hopefully will follow in their footsteps. I attended the Marysville Peach Festival this weekend, happened to get in the peach pie-eating contest with the councilmember of Marysville, councilmember from Outgrove showed up, and myself and three others, and I was lucky enough to win the pie competition, but paid for it a few hours later. I served breakfast, breakfast and lunch for the UBS city school district, their summer meals for children, kids eat free program. And I would like to thank Karen Lano, she's a student attrition area supervisor for running this program, and her staff. I attended several schools, or quite a few schools, we fed a minimum of twenty and as many as over a hundred and fifty free lunches for the summer. This program's still going, kids only get good lunches and breakfast during the school year, the school district continued this on for the summer. So all you have to do between zero and eighteen, just come in, no questions asked, they'll feed you breakfast and lunch. I just want to thank all the schools that I attended, with the staff there, the employees and stuff that helped me. I was at AK, April Lane, the Children's Center, Buick Vista, King Avenue, Lincoln, Linkcrest, Park Avenue, Riverbent Elementary, and UBS City High School. And then on July 13th, we were, we had a great time, we celebrated my mother's eighty-fourth birthday with friends and family. And then very last of all, for tonight, I would like to thank the administrative staff and all the employees, the city employees, who take care of council and the citizens of UBS City. We can't say thank you enough for their hard work that, that they do for us and to make us look good. I have, every Monday morning, or twice a month a week, I'll go in and see Steve and say, hey, Steve, I got another wish list, and Steve and staff and our employees take very good care of us, and I want to just thank them for making us look good and keeping all you folks happy. Anyway, that's up for me.
Thank you. Pretty light for the last, since our last meeting, I had the opportunity this time of year to take a vacation, would spend some time in Las Vegas and Southern Utah, which was very beautiful and fun, enjoy that. Also enjoyed the week around Fourth of July, went out to Dias Air Force Base in Abilene, Texas to spend it with my son and my two grandkids. So it was, it's kind of nice to have a barbecue in the back porch in Air Force Base on the Fourth of July, it was kind of really Americana, it was nice to, it was very enjoyable, so.
Was there stuff in the air there too?
Plenty of stuff in the air, believe, in Texas.
It's legal there?
It's legal. BMLC, Beal Military Liaison Committee, that's went to two change of command ceremonies out there in Beal like I did, I didn't mention last time, very nice, very tasteful, they do them often, but it's nice to meet the new folks out there in charge and to see them firsthand, and the way they, they run their operation out there, very smooth, very impressive, and it's, was a good time, always is. Attended United Way Board meeting, we're working on a few projects out there for that program. Again, my other committees and whatnot, because of the occasion, I was light on attendance, and some of the stuff was, Manny filled in for me on the SASSA meeting. Intended a Gilizer District meeting, which I think was record time short, thank you for that, sir. Four minutes?
Four minutes.
You got me out of work for about a half hour.
We had to deal with.
Yeah. And then ribbon cutting at UBSutter Arts, not as an official part of my role here as council, but they asked me to be a city representative of UBSutter Arts Commission, which is quite enjoyable, they did a really good job over there, and they added some nice things to our community, a very big variety of different things, they're even going to paint utility boxes and a few other things, just to add a little beauty out there in aesthetic effort. So we went to the, they call the Umbrella Sky Event, and the Citizen Artist Event, and they raised a little money and got to see a lot of people out there, and we just come together for the good of our community, so it's always enjoyable. That's pretty much it for me, for now. Okay, thank you very much. And Vice Mayor Didball?
Great. Light for me as well, couple of things, July twenty, or June 22nd was the graduation of our Summer at City Hall students. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it to the graduation due to conflict with a last-minute project that came up, but I joined the students the following day to take them out to the Capitol and go out to the governor's office and kind of put the whole program to an end there. The feedback that we've gotten from the students thus far is that another great experience for the second year, so we're looking to continue the program next year and continue to build on it, so very excited about that. The Children's Parade was phenomenal, to see all the little tricycles and all the colors, and not only the hot dog, but the cookie was an enjoyment at the end too. I have the sweet tooth, sorry, so I joined the kids with the cookies. Fourth of July, again, I just felt like I was in the middle of just bombs going off around my, my area, enjoying the evening with my family, and then all of a sudden get bombarded with things coming down in my backyard as well, and still have remnants in my backyard from... in my backyard from, from those situations. So hopefully next year, we will catch more and keep working on something to make it a better, quieter, and more enjoyable Fourth of July next year. I did have the honor to attend the American Red Cross Hundred Year Celebration and honored some amazing people that continue to serve our community and put in hours of hours of community service and not ask anything back. These folks offered food during the evacuation. There was nineteen hundred pounds of food within two hours delivered to Sutter when that evacuation happened. And all of that happened just behind the scenes with one phone call and just a bunch of folks through the American Red Cross who continued to reach out, out to the food banks, and within two hours had food delivered out there, along with mosquito wipes also, sprays, also crates for the animals to be protected. So there were four large crates that were delivered, donated by community. Met with Buick County Sheriff as well, he was actually the emcee for that event, and what a wonderful gentleman, and great sense of humor, too, under the circumstances, as he was honoring several people who helped. And, you know, as we celebrated tonight, some of the folks that did such wonderful work here with saving two lives. There were people that honor, were honored that with the American Red Cross, and one was, one of the officers actually saved a three-year-old, and she was there at the event, who was still wearing a neck brace, and, but she was so attached to the officer. And what was really beautiful about that event is he got awarded his certificate, and he turned around and he handed it to the little girl, and she gave him a big hug, and she's running around the stage, and it was just, they, they had that connection with each other, so. Anyway, it was a great event, and I was really glad that I could, I could be there, so. Other than that, it was pretty light, just vacation time and taking some more time off next month, so looking forward to that.
Thank you. Well, for me, it's never light. Life isn't light, and I know what you're referring to, everyone, it's, but life is extremely busy, but for me, it was, my main meetings were Regional Water Authority and the state continues to, legislators, at the pressure of our governor, continue to take local decision-making away from us on our water issues. We're trying to avoid one-size-fits-all, big city to little town to hamlets or whatever, and our governor just is, and legislators are just bent on having a hundred percent control of our water in, from the time it comes out of the sky to the, to its evaporation or going out to the ocean. So we're having a, some challenges, some successes, but then unfortunately, they can take and completely change that right at the last second until it's, you know, voted on and signed by the governor. So we're, we're at their mercy, unfortunately. Sutter Beach Flood Control Agency, some of the efforts we're doing to try to get the emergency money for the Three Miles of Uba City, the attempt for that meeting that we had, like you said, up on the levee, it was noticed where supposedly, you don't count your chickens before you hatch, as people say, but it's been designated as to a total of about thirty million dollars to get that redone, but the permits to do that for this year have been very difficult to get from the Corps of Engineers. So the state of California did get on board with it. The night before we actually went up there onto the levee, they made a decision that they would support us on it, politics. And so that's, that's a great thing. Gilizer, we just had to attend to some personnel and issues there that were actually a positive one. The Liberty, Fourth, Fourth of July Liberty Parade, children's parade, was absolutely a blast. Some of those outfits and decked out that they were, it was great, and a thousand hot dogs disappeared quite quickly. There was eight hundred last year, a thousand this year, and they're talking twelve hundred next year they're going to try to have. And of course, lots of cookies, lots of water, a beautiful local, what is it, Symphony, what do they call it, Symphony Group, it was excellent, music that was played, some of the old Souza numbers of the old marches and stuff that were played, and then some kids singing. It was fantastic. The only thing, the fireworks event that we had around town, we have one gigantic fireworks display around here, and it's in almost every neighborhood. There was some positive on that. There were some neighborhoods that actually seemed to have gotten the message, and it was much less this year in certain neighborhoods. So they, there was note taken as to the worst neighborhoods that we'll be focused on next year. I spent, yeah, yours is one of them, eight days I spent as a co-chair in a fireworks booth, so if anybody has ever wanted to find out what heat is and trying to keep yourself cooled down and stuff, that's, that's one of the ones you, if you ever want to experience it. Been doing that now over twenty-two years, and I'm ready to retire from it. Other than that, just a busy life, business is good. As you see, our community is growing in its retail and some commercial businesses are expanding, and, and much more to come, and it's all, a lot of it is due to the policy changes and improvements of, of things that this council and previous councils have done, laying the groundwork, and then not just sitting around, we're saying, "No, let's support it, let's get out in the community, talk to the developers, talk to the business people, and tell them that we're, you know, we'll work with them to, to help them get expanded." And it's been, as you see, there's measurable results of that, and we are going to be working very hard to make sure it continues for the next few years. And with that, if staff has nothing else, meeting adjourned.